... $200,000 since July. Fifty-two billion.
Also, we're gonna play the long game. Let's talk. Push it for the game as long as we want.
Yeah, absolutely. That'll be me.
Okay. I'd like to call the November twentieth regular school board meeting to order. The time is six o'clock. Did I say November twentieth? The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we need to... Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the agenda? Moved by Oje, second by Navy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. Okay, we have an agenda. Next is public comments. Do we have anyone? Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of routine items that are acted on in a single consolidated motion without board discussion. However, board members have the option of pulling items off the consent agenda if they wish to discuss them individually. Tonight's items are minutes of the October twenty-third, 2018 business meeting, minutes of the October thirtieth, 2018 board retreat, minutes of the November thirteen, 2018 special meeting, minutes of the November thirteen, 2018 work-study session, routine personnel, bid calendar, dispersments. Are there any items that you wish to pull from the consent agenda for further discussion? Okay, seeing that I'm looking for a motion to approve these items. Okay, moved by Oje. Second by Navy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, so the consent agenda is approved. Next, we have reports. So first, we have the school board representatives. Thank you for being here. First, we're gonna have Haley Pedersen from North.
As fall sports came to an end, our volleyball team had a tremendous season. They were runner-up to a competitive Stillwater team in our section final match. The school play was held this past month as well, spanning across two weekends. The Addams Family was a terrific production with rave reviews from all ages. Last week, two North High athletes participated in National Signing Day. Swimmer Olivia Lindorfer committed to University of Wisconsin-Madison and baseball player Eric Kubatawitz committed to Illinois State University. North High had five of the top math students visit travelers to learn about statisticians and actuaries and their roles in the insurance world. There was a participation in insurance simulation. They had two job shadows and a Q and A with college grads. Our National Honor Society is holding the annual Yay for Toys during this November. Yay for Toys provides toys for families in needs with the students providing donations. So far, students have raised $500 in four days and will be purchasing the toys later this month. In other news, the Polar Buddies Club is up and running again. This is the tenth year of the club where students with special needs have the opportunity to interact with mainstream peers through activities. It has been a great opportunity for all students.
Thank you, Haley. Kaitlyn Crumble, Crumel, sorry, from Tartan as well.
Saturday, school attendance has continued to grow over the course of the trimester, with over seventy-five students attending last weekend. Students received individualized support from teachers, took reassessments, completed homework, and began studying for finals. With snacks and support provided, this is a great way for students to be productive and effective while doing their work. Last week, Tartan business teacher Vicki Capon and her BPA students completed another successful Red Cross blood drive. Lots of students participated, and it was a great way to make a difference in someone's life. Over ninety Tartan seniors and their parents attended Fast Food Night in the Tartan Media Center. This gathering provides students and their families with information and help completed their FAFSA. The Association for Career and Technical Education announced Craig J. Sprider, the marketing teacher at Tartan High School in Oakdale, Minnesota, as a recipient of the 2018 ACTE Region Three Carl Perkins Community Service Award in October. This award recognizes individuals who have used CTE to make a significant impact in their community and demonstrated leadership in programs and activities that promote student involvement and community service. Mr. Sprider will travel to San Antonio, Texas next week, along with three other nominees from around the country where he is running for the National Community Service Award. Students are very excited for Thanksgiving break. There will be a fun game of Turkey Bingo going on during homeroom on Wednesday. Students are also preparing for finals next week. Tartan Relay for Life has raised over $22,000 so far. We had a goal to raise $20,000 by December thirty-first, and we are very excited to have met that goal over a month early. And finally, Tartan Football lost to St. Thomas on November tenth. However, they placed first in our section this year and made Tartan football history. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kaitlyn and Haley. Any questions? Nancy?
I just wanna say, I hope Mr. Sprider wins. He's just awesome. He's... For years, he's just gone over and above, right? With that DECA and the school store and all the rest, yeah. Yeah, he's an inspiration. So, I hope he wins that national thing. That would be great. Thank you.
Okay, thanks again, you guys.
Have a great Thanksgiving.
Me too.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have Superintendent Osorio.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here, Director Yenar, members of the board. I just have a couple of quick things to share with you this evening. In a few minutes, you're gonna get to hear about some wonderful programming happening in our community education program, so I'm excited that you'll be hearing about that tonight. But I also wanna mention to you that we have a lot of facilities planning underway. And as we enter into the end of November, beginning of December, we're gonna start having some feedback sessions to talk about our next draft of our facilities plan. So, there will be multiple meetings held with different staff members and parent groups at different sites. But there's gonna be two key ones open to the whole community. One in the north end of the district, and that's gonna be held here at the DEC, the District Education Center. And that's gonna happen on December thirteenth at six-thirty. Excuse me, cold. And then on the December seventeenth, the very next night, we're gonna have another meeting in the south end of the district at Harvard Elementary at six-thirty, also to talk about facilities master planning. So, we hope there'll be good turnout at both of those. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Christine. Any questions or comments for Christine? Okay. Next, from community education, we have Terry Johnson and Laura Greenlee Carp with Youth Programs.
Thank you. Yes, good evening. As Laura makes her way up to the podium, I'd like to just take a moment to introduce Laura Greenlee Carp. I'm really excited that she's here with us tonight to tell you a little bit about our community education youth programs. I do wanna clarify, our Adventure Connection program won't be part of this particular presentation. We'll have Tad Hagan, our out-of-school-time program supervisor, come and join us at a later meeting this year. But Laura has been with us for two years, and she's been doing a great job. We were very fortunate when we were looking for a new youth programs coordinator that the district strategic plan had just been unveiled. And so, our vision was to align our youth programs with our district strategic plan, and we were very fortunate to find Laura, who came to us with a background in experiential education, having worked with Outward Bound, and she just brings with her a lot of passion for this work. And so, I'm really excited for you to hear about the good work that she's been doing in the last two years and the plans that we have moving forward as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Yenar, board members, superintendent... or Superintendent Osorio and cabinet members. I'm happy to be here today to share an overview of the work in youth programs. As Terry mentioned, working with young people has been my career of choice for over fourteen years, both because it's exciting and ever-changing and because of the profound impact youth workers had on my life when I was growing up. It is with that foundation that we have created a template for the youth programs trajectory in our newly updated youth development plan. Each year, District 622 receives funding to provide programming in the area of youth development and youth service. This programming is organized using a youth development plan. You have a copy of that plan at your places, which will be submitted to the MDE shortly. This plan is grounded in the strategic plan and has been informed by over twenty hours of feedback from the community on how best to serve our youth in five key focus areas. The mission outcomes within the strategic plan that community education youth programs speak to most are one and two, which focus on creating opportunities for young people to address real-world challenges and learn about themselves through experiential learning. The five key areas I referenced before are listed on this slide, and they are the, again, the key areas in our youth development plan, which weave throughout all of our programming. The following slides provide some highlights of the programs that we offer. You'll notice we are not identifying them specifically under one key area or another, as there is definitely overlap among them. I'm gonna start first with Middle School Service Club. They were offered for the first time last year at John Glenn in Maplewood. This club was offered after school on a day of the week that targeted services was not running to provide an additional engagement opportunity for students. The focus of each group was to explore how they can positively impact their school and the local community. This picture on the slide shows the group after the students made cookies, packaged, and delivered them to bus drivers as they waited to... or as they waited to pick up their evening routes. This was a way to say thank you for all of the behind-the-scenes work that transportation does that helps students succeed. Again, this year, for the first time, school staff had an opportunity to apply for a grant to engage students in service learning. Changemaker grants are awarded to groups within District 622 who are seeking to empower youth through service learning projects and civic engagement. These projects help students build critical thinking, collaborative, and social and emotional learning skills through meaningful experiences. Intentional reflection is a key part to these grants, helping students to see that the impact that students...
Wow.
The impact that service can have. An exciting project from the fall was helping young people learn about civic engagement and how they can get involved. Students in six buildings participated in mock elections that did its best to create the feeling of being in a real polling place, complete with "I voted" stickers, and we collected over thirteen hundred ballots from students. In addition, we spoke to over four hundred avid students in partnership with the League of Women Voters to discuss the importance of participating in local elections and the impact that they have directly on students' lives. During these presentations, students learned about an opportunity to serve as election judges in Ramsey County. We had over eighty students representing many cultures, races, and ethnicities from Tartan and North. These students worked at sixteen polling places in Ramsey County. I received training from Ramsey County and then trained the students on their roles. The feedback that we received from the students was very positive about their experience, and we also got amazing feedback from the election judges who were also working with those students. In fact, one of them pulled me aside and completely unprompted said that she felt like she was getting more out of it than the students were. We also offer youth enrichment classes. In those classes, our students have an opportunity to learn about areas of interest that could even become pathways in their future. We focus on offering unique and engaging ways for students to explore art, movement, STEM, culture, and language classes. Again, this hope is that this opens early explorations into the future... into their future for career pathways. This year, we also began offering middle school field trips on almost every non-school day. Our field trips are about more than just doing things to do things. We are intentional about creating spaces for students to grow. The picture on the slide is not of a student, but is actually of the adult chaperone, who is terrified of heights and still wanted to try. This is an extremely powerful role modeling for our students, who are feeling nervous but were inspired by the example and vulnerability of an adult who faced their fears to complete a task and really celebrate how that felt. While the High Ropes Course highlighted possible careers in experiential education, our Target Field Tour provided an opportunity where students learned about all of the possible ways they could work in professional sports in case they don't make it as a professional athlete. Just in case. Just in case. Last summer was also the first time that community education joined forces with the athletic directors to coordinate summer athletic and band camps. This partnership was created to increase access to district-wide programming while also decreasing the cost to participants. I was also able to streamline the process by offering all of the camps through the community education website, which created a hub of resources for the community. A key component to the success of these camps is the leadership provided by high school students working with and providing positive role models to the younger students. I forgot to switch my slide, sorry. This is a great example of the North High cheerleaders working with younger students to perform at halftime. Last summer was also the first year of roots and sprouts. Carver Community Garden was an underutilized resource managed by community education, which provided a space to create an intergenerational gardening program. This program allowed families to come together, have fun, and learn about gardening. Each session started with a science and art project that related to the themed fruit or vegetable of the week. And this actually was taught by a District 622 mother-daughter team, Karen and Alexa Peterson, who was the valedictorian of North last year. This group then worked to harvest and sustain the garden plot. The feedback we got was incredible. Some highlights included many families returning every week, all ages learning through the science curriculum, and students clamoring to harvest and eat the fruits and vegetables. There were borderline a few fistfights that almost happened over broccoli. It was pretty impressive. They really loved gardening. Additionally, two family festivals have been created with the intent to highlight traditional cultural festivals while also allowing people unfamiliar with those celebrations to learn and participate. I partnered with the Latino Student Group at North to put on a Dia de los Muertos event, which was a large... or which is a large celebration in Mexico. The event included cultural dance, face painting, coloring, food trucks, and an oversized cardboard dragon maze. It was pretty epic if you weren't there. This October, I also reached out to the Mung Parent Committee, and we are partnering to put on a Mung New Year celebration, which is coming up on December fourteenth. Of course, you all are invited to that. This event will include traditional dance performances by District 622 students and families, food, and traditional Mung games. In short, we're changing lives. Whether it's through learning winter camping skills, academic mentorship, access to new programming, learning how artists use their voices, providing a joke over lunch for our Meals on Wheels participants, exploring future careers, or facing fears in a safe space, community education commits each day to develop and empower lifelong learners who thrive in diverse communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Any questions or comments? Teresa?
Terry, outstanding hire. I can see where you bring such an incredible enthusiasm. But I wanted to say that, you know, just the choice in your terms, the changemaker... You can't help but feel like you're part of something positive. But what... The blending of the age groups is outstanding. And I have to share, my dad's an election judge in Panopin County, and he's eighty-six. And they two had students. And he had to call me three times to ask if they were my students, because he thought it was the best thing ever. And I think that, you know, just that one piece of what the connection there, he's gonna remember it, and those kids remember it. And I just... I just really wanna applaud those kinds of programs that bring them... those kinds of people together, especially in our community. And so, outstanding presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Nancy?
Laura, also to comment on the election project. You probably already know this, but the Maplewood City Council race would be a good example for them to... for you to bring up when they talk about whether a vote matters. As you know, it was... Two candidates got exactly the same number of votes. And there was a coin toss. And then subsequently, there'll be a recount and some canvassing of the votes. But, I mean, that... You know, for people that wonder about whether the vote matters. And also, on this board, we had... Not this current board, but this school board, we had a person elected to this board by one vote years ago. So, anyway, that'd be good to bring up with your students.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And that's something that they're talking about in the classrooms after the fact. But, yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, it was a great presentation. I loved hearing those stories and the service learning, the election judges. It's great. And the alignment with the strategic plan is perfect. So, thank you very much for coming. Next, we have action items from the business office. We have acknowledgement of contributions and Nancy Livingston.
Yes. Okay. Minnesota Statute 123B.O2 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district requests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. On that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, the Director of Business Services recommends the following resolution. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 622 that the School Board accept with appreciation the following contributions and permit their use as designated by the donors. Connie Hall donated winter hats and gloves for Richardson students. New Image Exteriors donated $500 for Cowanar Elementary. WSBN Associates donated $250 for the Tartan Robotics Team. Teresa Oje, I know her, donated fifty-four three-ring binders for 622 schools. Silver Lake United Methodist donated hats, mittens, and gloves for Richardson and Castle students. Knights of Columbus Council 4967 donated twelve new winter coats for Richardson students. Rachel Bond and family also donated winter coats for Richardson students. Lolita V. Cox donated backpacks and notebooks for Castle students. And finally, Paul King of Northern Tool and Equipment donated five engines and four lawn mowers for the North High Industrial Tech Program. So, the total fiscal year monetary contributions come to $51,072.34. So, I'd like to make a motion that we accept these donations with appreciation.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. So, it's moved by Nancy, second by Coburn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. So, the consent agenda is... No, sorry. The contributions are approved. Yes. Okay. Next is teaching and learning. And we have course name changes for school year 2019-2020. And Peter Mau.
Yes, thank you. As you can see in the notes in front of you, we have a couple of areas that we're asking for some course name changes. The first is related to a program review that our Family and Consumer Science Department recently underwent through the Minnesota Department of Education. And that happens every three to five years. And as part of that, we try to align with industry standards. And so, these course name changes don't really change the content of the courses, but rather the names to align with industry standards. So, that's General Nutrition and Foods becoming Intro to Foods, Family Life becoming Family Life and Relationships, and Advanced Foods becoming Pastry and Baking. And then the other set of course name changes are for physical education. As you know, we recently had some changes in credit requirements there. And to provide more clarity to students as they register, suggested name change from Strength Training for Athletes to Beginning Strength Training for Athletes, and then Strength Training for Personal Fitness to Beginning Strength Training for Personal Fitness. Happy to entertain any questions if you have them. Yes, absolutely. Our District 622 Advisory Committee does recommend these course name changes.
Okay, thank you, Peter. So, any other questions, comments? Then we need a motion in a second to approve the name changes. Okay, moved by Navy, second by Oje. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. Okay, that the course name changes are approved. Next on the agenda, we have for the school board. Okay, we need to set a location for our December eighteenth, 2018 reflection session. We have the date and time set, but we need to take action on the location and agenda items for our December eighteenth reflection session. So, that the December eighteenth, 2018 reflection study session begins at 5:00 PM in Room 202 of the District Education Center. Include the following agenda items. One, icebreaker. Two, board committees. Three, board officer succession. And four, reports. Yes, Teresa?
I anticipate these conversations going very quickly, and I was wondering if we could just add... And I apologize if I didn't tell Christine in advance, but since you just announced that you're having two public meetings, maybe you could give us a ten-minute update on how those went or something?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
If that would be okay to add that? I know it's kind of our meeting, but it's... I think these topics...
Under reports, she could provide that number four. Yeah, I don't think we need to change anything. I mean, since reports is in there, right?
Well, it's usually our meeting, and so, since it's a reflection session, but...
Okay.
Just a thought.
You think what?
The agenda's fine.
Okay. The agenda's fine, right? If we do that. Okay. So, we need a motion in a second to approve setting that location and agenda.
So, move them.
Okay, moved by Coburn, second by Anderson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so that is approved. Next, we have to set a special meeting. The special meeting's required for three specific purposes. Oath of Office, Election of Officers, and Acting on Organizational Resolutions. So, that a special meeting be set for January fifteenth, 2019 in the boardroom of the District Education Center with a start time of 4:30 PM and the following agenda items. Oath of Office, Election of Officers, and Organizational Resolutions. So, again, if there are any comments, otherwise, I need a motion in a second.
So, move.
Moved by Livingston, second by Coburn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. And all opposed, say nay. Okay, that specials, so we have approval to set the special meeting. Next, we have set time, agenda, and location for the January 15th, 2019 Work Study Session. We have the date set for our January work session, but we need to set the time, location, and agenda. So that the January 15th, 2019 Work Study Session begin immediately following the adjournment of the January 15th, 2019 Special Meeting, approximate start time of 4:45 p.m. in Conference Room 202 at the District Education Center, and include the following agenda items: number one, superintendent check-in; number two, facilities; and number three, 2019-2020 enrollment and financial projections. Again, we need a motion in a second to approve.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Livingston. Second by Navy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. So that is approved as well. Next, we have board communication. Teresa, do you want to start us off?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay. Becky, Amy?
I just want to say congratulations to those of you that won your reelection campaigns, Michelle and Caleb. And I also would like to welcome Ben Jarman to fill my seat here on the school board starting in January. So congratulations to all you guys. And then also, it's that time of, hard to believe that it's already that time of the year, but starting with all those concerts and programs, and so just an extra shout-out to all those people that are doing those extra programs because they're always so good and there's so much talent out there. As parents, it's a great time to visit and visit the schools and see what our kids are doing. So thanks to all those people.
I echo that, Amy. I went to both musicals at both high schools, the North High Musical, Adam's Family, and Annie at Tartan High School. They were both great. They were both great. They just keep getting better and better. I'm just so impressed. And there's so much work, right, Christine? I mean, your daughter was in a lot of them when she was in school here. So congratulations to the directors and the students and the parent volunteers and the people who do the costumes and, you know, the whole enterprise is just outstanding. So thanks.
Laura from Community Ed already touched on this earlier, but I do encourage anyone that's interested to go to the Mung New Year celebration. It's going to be quite the event. It's from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. on December 14th, which is a Friday, and they'll be here at North High School in the cafeteria in the auditorium. And I've listened to quite a bit of the planning for it, and it's going to be a number of different events within one event. There's going to be a lot of food and a lot of Mung culture and celebrating their history and where they are today and their New Year celebration. So I just encourage everyone to make it to that if you can. And I'd like to thank District 622's Community Education and our Office of Educational Equity for working with the Mung Parent Group to get this really big event planned. So thank you.
I attended the pre-delegate assembly for the School Board Association for their 2019 legislative agenda last Saturday, and I left the book with additional recommendations. Generally during the delegate assembly, they vote on new or changes to current recommendations to the legislature. So the book this time has the recommended changes or additions to MSBA, to the legislative agenda, and I left a copy of that book with Kim. So if anyone is interested in seeing what those recommendations are or would like to also attend the delegate assembly, the delegate assembly will be at the Doubletree again in Minneapolis, and it'll be on the 30th, November 30th and December 1st. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention.
Thank you, Steve. Yep. Steve, if there was anything that was striking to you about that, if you might want to share it at a reflection session?
Sure.
Or, I mean, just a thought?
Well, the number-one thing that is not just a specific district issue is special education funding. And I think that we're already ahead of that learning curve in terms of how special education dollars are allocated to our district and what our needs are. And I know that, based on conversations that Randy and Christina brought to us in the past, I suspect that I'll be able to have some contributions to that discussion during the debate on those resolutions. But the special education needs are certainly huge in the district. There's a lot of the other resolutions around funding all-day pre-K and all those sorts of things that we've already been working on as a district for a long time. But I think that special education is going to be a huge focus for this legislative session.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Finally, we have our future board meetings are December 18th, 2018 Reflection Study Session at 5:00 p.m., December 18th, 2018 Business Meeting at 6:00 p.m. in the boardroom.
You didn't say anything about the letter.
Oh, you want me to say something about the letter? Okay. So we, as a board, are sending a letter to the St. Paul School District about a facility that they are opening on the border of District 622 within the Woodbury School District. And what we want to ask the District of St. Paul is, well, we want to dig into how this will impact our own enrollment and our own plans for facilities in the future. And it is highly unusual for a district to open a school outside their own district, and so we just want to learn a little bit more about this from their board if possible. And I don't know if we're sending them a letter. We've all signed it. I don't know if anybody has anything additional to say on that. Yep. Nancy?
Not on that subject, but I just wanted to say that at 4 o'clock on the 18th, before the reflection session, we're going to have a little reception, right, to honor Amy for her service on the board. Two terms, right, Amy? Yeah, two terms. And so the public is welcome. Anyone's welcome. So, yeah, yeah, we'll miss you terribly. But, so anyway, that's December 18th, 4 o'clock here in the district center.
Okay. Thank you, Nancy. And again, the December 18th board meetings are 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock. And with that, I'm looking for a motion in a second to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Coburn, second by Anderson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. Meeting is adjourned.